All right, we will now proceed to the Mesa City Council Study Session for this morning. That's September the 7th. Again, Councilmember Spilsbury is unable to attend and is excused. All other members of the council are present. Item one on for the agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda we have for our September 11th regular council meeting. Counsel, Mr. Freeman, do you have a question?
I do, Mayor. Thanks. I'm going to kick this off, you know, after the robust discussion on the CFDs. I've never had that in the last six years, so this has been great. But 3A is a question. I just wanted to get an overview of that because this is so important to our water reliability in our city and that we're building out our water treatment plant at Signal Butte. And thank you, Chris, for being here to, you know, we're going to spend almost $60 million for that. And, Chris, maybe you can give us an overview of that and then this, the revenue obligation, is that going to be a bond, cash, or how is that going to be paid back? Thanks.
Right. Well, good morning, Mayor, Council. So, Councilmember Freeman. So, this GMP is one of two GMPs to expand the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. And if you recall, this plant is located at Signal Butte and Elliott Roads. It's used to treat CAP water. It was commissioned in 2018. It's a 24 MGD plant. So, our intent is to double the capacity of the Signal Butte plant to meet ultimate demand in this part of Mesa. This first contract, as you stated, is about $60 million, thereabout. So, what this contract is focused on is building an 8 million gallon reinforced concrete reservoir, and that's going to be a twin, more or less, to the existing 8 million gallon reservoir. And that's part of the ultimate design. We'll also build all of the pump arrays that are needed to pump the water out in the various directions into the distribution system, and then other pertinences that are part of the expansion. And then GMP 2 will come back. That'll be roughly $100 million, and that's everything else outside of what's in GMP 1. So, that'll be the full completion of the doubling of the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant capacity to 48 MGD. Going to the financing, it is revenue, bonds with pledge revenue, and that's the financing mechanism. We're actually going to come back to you a week from today, and we're going to give a very detailed presentation that looks at our portfolio for the Colorado River, as well as groundwater, everything needed to support demand both now and all the way to ultimate buildout in this part of Mesa. So, we're excited to come back and really get into the weeds and give a detailed presentation about that next week.
So, thank you, Chris. So, the next phase is about a $100 million project to finish the completion of the water treatment plant?
Yes. We're still negotiating that, but it, that's the order of magnitude, about $100 million. And that would be, that would complete, that would be the second and final contract needed to complete this project.
And how will it affect the water reliability there in the southeast part of Mesa?
Well, if, you may remember, when we first brought the 24 MGD plan online in 2018, almost immediately, we were running at full capacity in the summertime. So, it didn't take long before we started to design this current expansion. We started it a couple of years ago. The design is finished. We've been negotiating with our contractor, McCarthy. And it's, it'll be needed to meet ultimate buildout. It'll give us a lot of breathing room. We're also expanding the well field for redundancy in this part of Mesa. So, we have multiple well projects that are underway, all to make us, to give us a more robust and resilient utility.
Good. Well, I think that's so important. I know that Councilmember Summers leaned over and said, "This is coolest part of Mesa," but I'll disagree with that. It's one of them. But with that, the wells and the necessity of having water in that area is very important for not only our economic growth, but reliability in our system. So, appreciate this project coming forward because it is expensive, but it will pay for itself over the years and generations. So, thank you.
Is all this construction going to be done on the site, or are there going to be lane restriction requirements in the roadways? This area is a hot mess right now.
Well, the nice thing, one of the fortunate things for our department is when we do work at a facility like this, it's, there's very little disruption to the public. There is going to be work on the perimeter. We have to work with the perimeter wall. There's going to be large equipment moving in and out. There might be intermittent lane closures, but by and large, most of the work is focused at the site.
Okay. I would just ask that we look at that because right now, in the area that this is at, Signal Butte and Elliott both have multiple lane closures from multiple projects. I know one of the wells caused a slight lane closure. That's gone now, which is fantastic. We absolutely need this project for the future of our residents. We need the water for drinking and economic development. I just hope that we can manage this construction process with a lesser degree of interruption than we've been experiencing of late. Much appreciated, but we'll do our best.
Thank you. Ms. Duff?
Yes, I agree that we need to definitely make this investment to expand, for the expansion. How does our capacity needs line up with the large industrial needs that are, will be coming online? I don't know what the timeline is on, this is 8 million, and I know we're going to expand to the full 48. We have some large industrial demands in there, so I, are we okay as far as meeting those demands with our infrastructure?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Duff. So, we're in the middle of updating our integrated master plan right now. And part of that is looking at land use throughout all of Mesa, not just this part of Mesa, but looking at what should be the, the water use per acre, per unit area for that type of demand, and looking at doing a projection to see how that demand curve looks with, under different scenarios. And then, as a, as a way to help manage that, we're also, we have an ordinance in place, as you know, the MLM ordinance, which caps the amount of water that would be taken from our portfolio and used to serve any given development, whether it's a, I don't want to get into specific industries, but any large water user, right? We're actually going to be, come back to you at some point here in the near future to try to even make that more robust. We've learned, as this current ordinance has been in place for a couple of years, we've learned more about it, how to make it better, how to make it better for us, how to make it better for our customers. So, it's all part of a larger demand management effort, if you will, that starts with the master plan, and it involves cooperation between water resources and economic development and all the departments within the city. So, it's managing demand. So, larger water users that want to come in, they're, they're going to have to recognize that we have limitations concerning what we're going to serve them from our portfolio. Anything above and beyond that, we already have one or more customers that have had to go with secure water on their own. We'll pump that and provide that to them, but it's not coming from our portfolio.
But, of course, just to say, you know, some of these large user users that we anticipated have shifted technologies, right?
That's a, that's a great point.
That's going to have a huge impact on not what we were expecting we were going to have to deliver has been reduced significantly for some of these mega users that we were talking about in the.
Right. It's not a one-way street. Industry itself recognizes that they need to be stewards of this resource, and they've taken some marvelous steps in terms of self-policing themselves on water use.
Right. We have some approved projects that are under construction right now, and I'm not sure of their completion date and when their demands will hit our, you know, water supplies. And I was just wondering, are we, are we good as far as getting, when they're online or online as far as with our expansions to be able to meet the needs? So, I understand the conversation about future demands and how we have to manage that, and I know we do a great job at doing that. But from where we are right now and what we have obligated, you know, to the approved projects, are we lined up with the capacity to meet those obligations?
Councilmember Duff, we are the only one really large water user that's under construction and about to come online here in the next year. Most of the water that they're going to use is not our water. It's water that they've had to secure for themselves. We'll, we'll pump it and distribute it to them.
Right. So...
But they're, they had to buy the water.
So, that pumping and distributing to it does not affect our reservoir supplies?
It won't come from the, it won't come from the Colorado River.
I mean, we don't have to have any capacity here? You know, I know it's not our water. They're using water credits, right? But we still have to process it, right?
It's ground, so the water that they have secured and deeded over to us is all groundwater. It's long-term storage credits that they bought from another entity.
Right.
So, the water that falls within, within the realm of what we're going to supply them from our portfolio, most of that would come from the Colorado River.
Right. So, do we need to process that water? Do we have the capacity of processing the water, whether we're giving, we, is from our supply or from their water credits? Do we have the capacity with our expansion to meet the demand when they come online?
Yes, between the plant and our groundwater infrastructure, we do.
And we, how to represent that was, to be very clear, we won't permit anyone. We won't enter into the agreement unless we can. We are obligated. We, it's not like, it's a little difficult to even answer the question because it's, it's an obligation for us to provide that water. Because, and even, even if we're just passing it through our pipes, because we've agreed to the terms of the agreements, yes, we must provide that water to them. Otherwise, they are in the assumption, if they're building out and executing contracts, they expect us to deliver that water. And so, we are under that legal obligation to that. We will not enter an obligation for any of these developments unless we can meet their obligations.
At the time, we made the, is it MGM? I don't know. What is it? The mega water user. Anyway, we created that ordinance, right?
Yeah, right.
At the time, we created that ordinance and approved a project. We also were approving at the same time these infrastructure needs for our water portfolio. I'm not saying it's directly related, but I'm saying we had anticipated with the approval of these water infrastructure thing that we needed to increase our demand. So, we approved this, we entered agreements. Are they aligning and timing? You know what I'm saying? I know that we provided, we wouldn't have made an agreement.
I think, yes, that's a good question. So, the reason why Chris is here today trying to get this done is we have, we need to get these projects going in order to meet that anticipated future demand.
And we're fine with the timing on it? You feel that we're going to, with the facing?
You wouldn't want to slow down. You wouldn't want to delay.
No, 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 I don't, I don't.
But you can't go any faster than what's here in front of us, right?
Okay, all right.
Right. We were ready to, to move forward many months ago, but we felt that the price wasn't right at the time, and things were, there was confusion in the economy. Inflation was really spiking last summer, and that's when it peaked. And we felt, all right, maybe the contractors got over skis in terms of what they're trying to project could be their cost, and we felt like that's not a good offer to bring to you for approval. We've done a lot of work with the contractor. The teams have done a great job, and now we're at a point where we can look ourselves in the mirror and say, "This is a good negotiated deal," and that's why we're bringing it here today.
And we would say, too, that there's been a change in the demand, right? We're not building as many single-family homes that are, you know, coming up that are having to provide water to either. So, the shift as far as new customers is not residential anymore. Before, that was driving this. Now, we'll see, you'll see, when we start talking about utility rates, you'll see when Chris brings his presentation to you next week, you know, the, the new demand is all being based on commercial. But we, we can have a better estimate and kind of calculate where that is. We need this project. We're timing it. We delayed it for cost purposes, but we also looked at the demand profile or demand calculation. So, we were comfortable holding off on building it because initially, this was, two, three years ago, we were talking about doing this project, I think, Chris, initially. So, we both, on a cost perspective, we, it was out of this world, and then we brought that back. But during that time, we've also seen the demand for water change a little bit just because of the slowdown in the economy in certain sectors. Now, obviously, the commercial sector continues to grow, but even some of them, again, we're seeing the shift in technology and the type of demand. But looking forward, you know, we, at some point, we needed to get these projects. When you get, because there's so, so much lead time, and Chris came to, we talked about four years ago just doing the design part of this. Is that something like that, three or four years ago, just the design?
Correct.
So, it takes, we have to look out that far. So, yeah.
Okay. So, we feel pretty confident that the demand, the demand's on our system, and I know that we need to do this, and we need to get it online. We're going to be able to meet those demands and then continue on the expansion beyond this. This is just an interim place to get immediate relief, right?
Yeah, we're confident in the approach we're taking, where we're at today, and the presentation next week is, is going to be very informative in terms of where we came from in the 1980s, where demand went. It's, it's interesting, the last 20 years, if you do a best-fit curve, the demand is flat. The demand really is flat.
But our supply isn't, anyway.
But, well, but no, that's what's great, is we have a robust supply, but the demand has flattened out. And so, we, that just helps us feel more comfortable about the future and where we're at. But that's why we're doing the central pipeline, right, to give us more water access. So, if you look out at a lot of new development, the average, what the average resident is using for water has dropped. It's less than it ever was back 10, 15 years ago. So, that's really helping us manage our water demand going forward.
And we're having a presentation on a water update. Was it next week or?
A week from today.
Next week?
Yep.
Okay. Look forward to that. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment. I know, Chris, you and I have talked about the increasing, the significant increase in costs and the issues with that. And I just appreciate your efforts in negotiating those down, holding off, delaying, and making sure we negotiate that to, as you say, Chris, a point we can look in the mirror and feel comfortable. So, anyway, appreciate those efforts. I've been out to Signal Butte. It's an impressive facility, state-of-the-art. And I know, you know, we won't get into this here, and hopefully you'll talk about this, but the groundwater issue, the extra credit are, are not, don't go through that treatment plant the same as the surface water. So, I know, you know, the reservoir is used, but it, so there is not as much of a capacity issue for that groundwater and those credits that have been taken. But anyway, I look forward to that presentation next week as well.
Thank you.
Chris, I have one more question. On timelines for the build on these projects, what are we looking at? So, we approve it today or Monday, and then moving forward?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, so I know the contract, I think it says 29 months. I don't think it'll take that long to do the reservoir and the pumping. Building a reservoir will take less than a year, or it could take a year. But what's, the challenge we're facing with, with duration is really supply chain and how long it takes to get mechanical and electrical equipment. So, that's what really is driving the, the longer timeline.
Well, thank you. You know, I know we, we tried to build this last year, like you pointed out, but the costs were so high to give it some time to play out, to see where you're at. But I, I think it's important to note that even though we have our bigger water users, they're using our same infrastructure that we're going to deliver the water. They have their own water. They're not getting any incentive to decrease their costs. I mean, they're paying the same cost as any other water user, correct?
You're correct. So, they pay for the water. They buy the long-term storage credits. And they're, as soon as they deed them over to us and they use them, they're extinguished. So, they have to keep buying these credits. So, that's the incentive, I think, to be more efficient operationally on their side. But then, the rates they pay, once they deed that water over to us, they pay the, the normal rates for that classification.
I think you're going to see some incentives we're going to create in the rates for them to use less water, too.
Well, yeah, we've talked about that as well. But I, I think it's important to note, we're not depleting our water portfolio at all, and, and that's the main concern as a city. Because obviously, the drought mitigation is a very important part in our whole valley. And so, we're one of the best-prepared water people, I guess, in the city. So...
We think so, and that's what we'll try to demonstrate to you next week.
Yeah, okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, I, I just need to note that when this comes up next Monday, I will be declaring a conflict because I have a family member that works for this construction company, not on this project, but still, it creates conflict. So, I won't participate in the discussion, or I appreciate the vice mayor will conduct that part of the meeting. All right. Other questions regarding Monday's meeting? Mr. Rodeo?
Hi. Question on 4C. Just wondering, do we, this is a company that was in the previous fiber RFP process, right? And then, do we have any indication on where, what they're going to be starting with? Like, are they focusing on residential or business or any other details that they're, as we see kind of west and downtown Mesa, these companies have been furious on getting around the neighborhoods and laying out fiber. But I was just wondering, like, what's, what's, any info on their, their outlook on where they're going to start or any of that?
Sure. Yeah. Good morning, Mayor and Vice Mayor. And actually, you're in luck because next week, I'll be coming back with a full update on the fiber initiative. But on this item, the company is actually, is Zayo. They're actually a, a company that's been around in one form or another for about 15 years. So, they weren't part of the original, of the RFP process from last year. They've traditionally been a business-to-business provider that's, that's been operating mainly in, on the east side of town, kind of gateway area, that sort of thing. But this is actually kind of cool because they were operating under a telecommunications license with us that came up for renewal. Because of the fiber license that you all started to enact last year, it's a more modern license. It gives us more certainty on, on right-of-way control, on fees and that sort of thing. And they are opting to now enter into that new license with us for, for the term period. So, this is really just a continuation of their services. They do plan to continue to provide additional service. But again, it's, it's your businesses. It's maybe some small cell stuff and that sort of thing is, is their traditional work. But I am excited to come back next week and share all the other progress.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Counsel, other questions about Monday's agenda? Yes, Ms. Duff?
On 5A regarding personnel rules, the changes, after some thought, I see that we're removing the stipulation that council-appointed board and committee members are not allowed to have a relative, this is employed as a full-time, part-time employee, all that, most kind of thing. There's two points on that. First of all, on our advisory board and committees, those are volunteer positions. And I read this as that is going to be possible to have some kind of relative of council on those boards or commissions. And some of them are not ones that affect decisions or votes. But there are ones like planning and zoning that do have a direct impact on our decisions. And I think that would be a conflict where there is a board that is taking a vote that is passed to, as a recommendation to the city council versus, let's say, like the museum, arts and culture, the more of a listening board and such, and they're not really making any decisions from those.
So, I, that's an interesting scenario. I, yeah, I think the scenario we were assuming, because frankly, I don't know that we've really paid a whole attention, is someone on design review board or planning, planning could have a relative working in the city, and this would prohibit that, or what currently is prohibited. And we're like, why does, I mean, the people that volunteer on our boards or people who are, you know, involved in Mesa, we're thinking, why would it matter if someone on planning and zoning had a relative who worked in the fire department or wherever? And so, we decided, you know, just looking at other cities, it was like, we weren't, we couldn't make the linkage of the conflict for that purpose, right? Because it's, it's really the idea that someone who works on a board could have a relative working in the city. And we just didn't see that when we thought about, you know, I guess, other than what, the mayor board or something like that, that could be a possible conflict. But other than that, we just couldn't imagine why it mattered that someone on design review board couldn't have a son or a daughter working in parks and rec.
I was interpreted in another way. So, maybe I was there that, looking at mayor and council and our relationships and...
Oh, with the board member, yeah.
With board members.
I think that would be a different kind of.
And I wanted to make sure that planning and zoning wouldn't be appropriate.
The council. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, there's, under mayor, city council, boards and committees, and I need to maybe clarify, you know, my misunderstandings and such, that there was two concerns I had that I just wanted to make sure that, especially on planning and zoning, you know, which is an advisory board who has direct impact on the city, that we don't have relatives in that. And number two...
We're not changing that. We're not changing that.
That there was a provision in that mayor and city council could not have any relatives employed by the city unless they were prior employed before they, they were elected as an official. And that, I think, is a little tight. I would like to say, to take it into the realm of what is expected of like city management, which is what, three levels of separation?
Yeah.
We have levels of separation because we're such a large city, and I don't know, 4,000 employees, something like, I don't know.
No, and it actually helps explain that for all the departments, right? That kind of resolves an issue across all the departments. So, before, every department will have their own rules, and this way, we're kind of like, making it very clear how it applies for, so actually, that's a really good, that helps.
So, I'd like to suggest if it is a relative of mayor, city council, that it's at least three levels away instead of, no, you have any relative within the city.
Yeah. And we can, there's a few other changes that we intend to bring back also on the personnel rules. And so, we're, we're just, you know, I, I know it used to be these would come maybe once a year or even less often to council. I think there's going to, it's going to be coming more frequently just to, instead of waiting multiple years to bring a huge package, we're going to just do smaller packages, make it more manageable on, on the, the staff and, and council. And so, we could put that in a future amendment.
Let me ask, let me clarify, though. But is that being changed?
That is not being changed.
Okay.
Mayor, council members.
Now, there was a request.
The, the section on the relatives of the mayor or council members, that is not being addressed in this personnel rules change. If we have any recommendations, like the city attorney, Jim Smith, has indicated, we will be bringing those back in future cycles and that, you know, that will probably be sometime next year for discussion. But no, we are not making any changes to the mayor and council member relative section.
Okay. So, just for my clarification, to make sure I understand, will you state what those rules are in relationship to boards and committees? Is there a, you know, something written there in our relationship to boards and committees and our relationship to employees in general?
Yes. So, the, the current rules indicates that mayor and city council members shall not be allowed to have, have a relative employed in any city department as a full-time or benefited part-time employee. And the section shall not be construed to require the dismissal of an employee who was hired before a relative is elected.
I would like to suggest to change it to the same phrasing or the same rules as management, which is three levels.
Yeah. And we, that's why, to allow for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we, we've heard that, and I think we, that's what we were talking about.
Okay.
And that will be brought back in a subsequent.
Okay, okay. And that stands.
I think that was, we, I think we got focused on the board and commissions, but we can apply that to the council with the same degree of separation. So, yeah, I think that came up, and I think, Terry, we talked about, we would, like Jim's saying, in the next round, we'd probably include that one.
Okay. And then, our relationship to boards and committees, what is that relationship? And so, I understand it's not being changed, but what is that?
That is not being changed. So, in relation to boards and committees, the, there is not a conflict with that.
There, what is the rule? Are we making any changes in that?
We are not making any changes.
What is the rule?
Are there any conflicts with that?
There's no prohibition for mayor and council's relatives to serve on boards and committees, not as volunteers.
Correct.
That's the current, that's the current status.
And how do we feel about that for like planning and zoning, which does have direct relationship? I mean, we, we don't confer with them, but their decisions...
The fact that you vote on it, you make the decision each time, right? So, you make that decision.
It's a good question, and I think that's...
I don't know if you would adjust it to personnel rules. To me, that's a council appointment. I don't know, it feels kind of odd putting that in personnel.
So, that would be under our appointments?
It's your government.
We should talk about whether we want to change that policy or not.
Oh, okay. All right.
You're saying otherwise, it's just case by case, right?
Yeah.
It comes to council.
Do you even appoint a person to begin?
I don't know if it's a personnel rule. I think that's like what you do as council. You know, I don't...
All the appointments come to council. So, council would see and know it.
It doesn't feel like it's in an employee issue. It's a council appointment.
And, and the clarification on the, with the boards and committees was whether or not they could have an employee, they could be related to a city employee, not related to a council member.
Oh, right, right.
And that's, that was my misunderstanding, but still, bringing it back. I'm just going to put it out there. We don't have to...
No, but we, we can discuss it in the next... No, but we, we can discuss it in the next round, we'll bring it forward.
And it's probably good to know that none of this eliminates conflict of interest laws and rules, I mean.
Or ethics.
Or ethic, yeah, all of those, we're not lowering the bar in any sense on, or making exceptions that related to conflicts of interest. All right, thank you. Council, other questions regarding Monday's agenda? Okay, moving forward then, the next item on our agenda for this meeting, item two, is current events and conferences attended. Anything you'd like to share, Mr. Summers?
Well, since I'm sitting in council member Spillsbury chair, I might as well chime in on some meetings. So I'm, I'm part of the ACC's line sighting committee, we spent the last two days in meetings. We talk a lot about water, but we also talk a lot about power, and we are being, I'm gonna use a pun, we're being flooded with some good projects to ensure that we have the capacity and electricity that we need for growth in this state, and particularly economic development growth. And yesterday's was interesting, it was a windmill farm up north that will provide, if it, if it's successful, will provide power down to the valley as well, and several solar plants also are looking to, again, so these are renewable energy sources that are looking to tie into the grid and to increase the availability of power throughout the state.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So yesterday, myself and council member Spillsbury, we toured the family advocacy center, and very impressed there with all. Thank you, Chris, and your team for changing that billing, because it's a great improvement. And they can, you know, just learning about everything they're doing there is phenomenal, and that, you know, again, our Mesa Police Department's leading the way in advocacy. Yesterday, I attended a ribbon cutting for Laundromat, it's at Gilbert University, a new business, family-owned business that just opened up. So if you need clothes washed and folded, you can go there, they're willing to do that, and a delivery service on top of that. And this Saturday is Mesa will host a first responder breakfast at the Mesa Convention Center, and that'll be to remember our victims of nine eleven and recognizing our first responders. And there's still a lot of service projects, if people would like to participate in, on JustServe.org and other service organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other?
I assume someone would bring up yesterday's announcement.
Yes.
On that side of the table, but I don't know.
Why don't you, what's your impressions of the announcement yesterday about, from, from Google?
Okay, yesterday, well, they did make the announcement downtown Mesa, even though Google is a business located in District Six, would you like to talk about it? I don't want to take away.
No, I was at a different meeting, so.
Okay, all right, you know, so Google made an announcement on their groundbreaking of their data center in southeast Mesa, it's a six-hundred-million-dollar investment. What I love about it is they have, they're using air-cooled technology, the latest state-of-the-art in air-cooled technology, will not be impacting our water supplies, and they also committed to a net-zero operations in the use of their energy by 2030 and using renewable energies. So I'm, I'm very happy and welcome them to Mesa, and, you know, where they're not having impact on our emissions and our water supplies. Thank you.
The only thing I'll, thank, thank you, the only thing I'll, this is a big deal. This is hundreds of acres, hundreds of millions of dollars, but they announced yesterday as well that they're gonna locate their cloud service headquarters in Mesa, and it's gonna be more, this is gonna be, I get a large campus and a, and a corporate headquarters to a large extent for some of their important services. So they'll be important parts of the Google universe that will be, you know, headquartered in Mesa, so, so that's exciting to see. So we certainly want to welcome them to Mesa.
Council, anything else you'd like to share with us under this agenda item? Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Mayor, of course, will have our council meeting Monday, September eleventh, and then we will have this weekend also, the Mesa Arts Center season kickoff Friday, September eighth, from six to, six PM to eight PM, it's a free event. And while that's, and then the, the Saturday, sorry, Fri, that's Friday, Saturday, there'll be a skate party at the Plaza, so invite everybody to come out from six to nine. And so you're free to attend, the skate rentals will be ten dollars for a skate rental. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, that concludes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Summers and Mr. Freeman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned.